I don't know.
Okay, well, it looks like we are on the air now. So, welcome everyone this evening to our city council meeting. And would you like to join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Airy roll call.
Olson.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kellum.
Here.
Kupczynski.
Here.
Gilbert.
Here.
Canopa.
Here. Okay, well, this evening, we do have a very special presentation. And this is brought forward this evening by our police department for our public service awards. And Chief Lotanzio, would you like to come forward and present those awards? And I think we've got a couple captains with you also.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. We'd like to present the Public Service Award to two of our citizens. Names are Truman Tupperton and Leslie Tupperton. Can I have you come up here? Before I read the award, I think from the bottom of all of our hearts, we'd really like to thank you for your courage and commitment to the community, for making the community safe, keeping it safe. I know sometimes it's not easy to be the one who has to report these types of things. You kind of worry about what's going to happen afterwards. But just so you know, you did the right thing. So don't ever think that you did not do the right thing. On May 23rd, 2013, the two of you reported suspicious behavior involving the activities of West Albany High School student. As a team, the two of you recognized some warning signs and appropriately reported your concerns. Ultimately, you averted plans for mass violence that involved numerous destructive devices. We are confident that your combined actions saved lives and maintained the safety of the students and the staff at West Albany High School. Our community is grateful for your action and we acknowledge your courage. Thank you. Look over there so they get a chance to see it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And Truman, on behalf of the City of Albany too, we want to also thank you for your courage. And I know it had to been a really tough time. I don't think any of us could probably really comprehend what you went through, but we're really proud of you. So, thank you so much. Yeah, thank you. Yes, thank you. Okay, all right. Thank you, Chief. Next is we have a for scheduled business as a public hearing. And this is to hear public comments on community development needs that could be assisted with community development block grant funds, and to hear comments on the city's consolidated plan and annual action plan. All persons wishing to testify tonight, please approach the microphone and first state your full name and current address, and please make sure you have signed in at the table. The public hearing is now open at 7:20 PM. And first I'll call for staff comments from Planner Anne Catlin.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors. Oh, yes, it might help me with the PowerPoint. I wanted to give you an opportunity to become familiar with what the community development block grant programming is, mostly for the public that may be watching, and also for people that may be in the audience. So Albany became a community development block grant grantee last year, and so we're required to develop a long-range plan, a five-year plan called a consolidated plan, and also an action plan. And so, the plans outline what our community development needs are for the long-term, and they required a lot of work and with agencies and citizen participation. So, sorry, I kind of skipped that first slide. Sorry about that. So, the HUD requires us to adopt these plans and hear comment on them, as well as any other community development needs that maybe were not identified in these plans, and that's the purpose of the hearing tonight. We are going to also hold a hearing on August 14th, continuing this to August 14th, so comments are open through that date, either in writing to me or again on August 14th. But the overall program goals are to address three main priorities of HUD, providing decent and affordable housing, eliminating blighting influences, and economic opportunity. So, the mayor appointed a task force, and the task force and I worked with the mayor to come up with programming areas focused around those three goals. So, decent and affordable housing, the plan identified a lot of need out there related to housing affordability. There are numerous households that spend more than 30% of their income on housing costs, many that spend more than 50% of their income on housing costs and are therefore cost burdened. The Housing Authority has housing vouchers for almost 1,000 residents, but there's a waiting list of about 1,000 more. We also looked at housing condition because that can affect livability. And as you know, we have an aging housing stock. We have about 11,000 units built before 1980, so there is a big need for housing rehabilitation, and also potentially lead paint hazards. So, to address those general areas of need, there is a proposal to develop a housing rehabilitation loan program that could assist homeowners or renters in improving their living conditions, as well as weatherization, energy efficiency, and also money could be set aside for constructing or acquiring more affordable housing units. Another area that we're required to look at are the needs of our homeless population. We do have a lot of homeless people, and what was surprising to me was the number of chronically homeless people that we have in Albany. The point in time count that was done earlier this year in January, found that there were 111 people that have been homeless for more than a year, and then 89 that had had former episodes in the last three years. I thought that was really interesting. There were many children in our school district, 292, that were homeless. Most of them were living with other families. So there's clearly a need to address these issues that cause homelessness. Some of the proposed activities include emergency shelter for families with children, for young adults and unaccompanied youth, more transitional housing, services to help people address their issues around homelessness, and prevention services. So, in the category of removing blight and deteriorated conditions, improving low-income areas, we identified several city resources that could really, that needed improvement, that were actually becoming dangerous in some cases. Periwinkle Path is, has deteriorated beyond being safe in several areas and may need to be closed. Sunrise Park has the original playground equipment, and it's a site for illegal activities and kids hanging out, and the park really needs to be redesigned. It's also, these two facilities are in low-income neighborhoods, and also in areas with concentrations of minorities. So these projects really popped up. There may be other public facility improvements that come out over the five-year period. We also want to improve our accessibility around the city, especially with our public facilities, and then curb ramps around transportation routes and around public facilities. In addition, we have a lot of sidewalks that need repair in lower-income neighborhoods, and some areas that do not have sidewalks. So those are all projects that could be funded with community development block grant funding. So the last big area is expanding economic opportunities, which is why a lot of our families do have housing affordability issues. So to address some of the economic conditions that we have here, primarily a very low, very high unemployment rate, and some of the main jobs that our industries provide pay low wages, we propose to set aside funding for microenterprise assistance. There's a program that Lynn Benton Community College operates now that we have supported in the past, that we would propose to continue supporting because it has produced results with new businesses and new jobs. As well as supporting businesses that create or retain jobs, there's a number of ways that could happen. And this category also includes supporting special economic development activities, which would include improving commercial businesses that are in low-income residential The last general funding category is public services, and this is, really covers everybody in all program areas, but it really can help our special needs populations. We have a lot of aging seniors, we have a lot of residents with disabilities, we have a lot of chronically mentally ill people living in Lynn County. Drug and alcohol addiction are a big problem in this county. We have many children that go to foster care, and preventing that from happening would be a good thing, and domestic violence and child abuse, among many other needs out there. So there is funding set aside to support agencies that provide services to help with all of our special needs and low-income populations. There are a few other requirements in addition to the two plans, the five-year plan and the one-year action plan, which identify specific projects and funding that would spell out some of the program areas that I described. And that includes addressing fair housing. We do have a resolution that says we will affirmatively further fair housing, but we will be developing a fair housing plan, which will include an analysis of impediments to fair housing. We'll be working on that over the next year. We have to adopt a residential anti-displacement and relocation plan, and then other general federal policies such as excessive force or not using it in nonviolent civil rights demonstrations, having a drug-free workplace, and an anti-lobbing policy if federal funds are involved. So, those are proposed either for adoption by resolution, or we just need to certify that we have those policies in place. There, with that, I will open it up for comments. I did pass around on the dais, and I have this sheet available at the counter where you can sign in to testify. It's a summary of the first year program activities, and you've seen a smaller version of this in the memo that went in your council packet. But I didn't want to go over these because I generally cover the areas, but it's a nice way to summarize some of that funding on one page rather than looking through the documents. And with that, I will open it up for any questions.
Any questions, Anne?
Anne, if some of the funding in some of these categories as defined are not utilized in the program year, does the balance roll over into the following, into the following year?
We have to spend a certain percentage before we get more money, and I think it's 60-something percent. So my goal is to assess where we are, and see if we want to move funds around within the program areas to get us across that threshold before we can get new funding, but a small amount could carry over.
With the various areas of funding, how fungible are the delineations in between? I mean, if you, if it's easy to come up with use for $60,000 in one, but you can't come up with a healthy way of doing the $20,000 in the next one? I mean, what kind of hoops have to be jumped through in order to change how the money is spent? I mean, is that just something a board that is set up can do, or does it have to come to us, or?
I'm glad you asked that question. So, the plan, the action plan, or the consolidated plan can be amended through a public hearing process. So we've done our best guess at how we hope the money will be distributed, and if it goes well, we may not need to hold a public hearing to amend that, or we may be holding a public hearing already in anticipation of next year, and that would be a time to amend areas that maybe didn't get funded, projects that didn't get off the ground, and move those funds around. So, we're starting our program year October 1st, so we have a very short window to spend that money. And the HUD staff said it was okay to amend the plan, knowing that we're taking a guessing game as to what's going to be ready to go. So, I'll just add to that, we did try to distribute funds to agencies that already have programs up and running, so that we knew we would spend a certain percentage of money. And then, the rest, we are hoping that there are projects in economic development, as well as in services, and I know there's a lot of service needs out there, that will get funded, and we won't have to do that, but we can if we need to. There is a commission, sorry, one more thing, that will be appointed. You may remember at the work session we had back in May, that there will be a community development commission appointed, and they will really take charge of figuring out some of these programming details, and then they will provide direction to you for final decisions.
Thank you.
Why do you still have a question?
Yes, two questions, Anne. You mentioned that you've made an attempt to allocate to existing programs. Is that replacement money, or is that enhancement of those programs and growth of those programs?
Well, it's a little bit of both. So, with the housing rehabilitation loan program that CSC currently operates, their loan balance is down to pretty much nothing. So, that would be putting money in a separate pot that's only available to Albany residents, but that would continue an existing program. With the microenterprise program, it is, it is an existing program, but my understandings are looking to expand their services with that. And HUD does have a requirement for everything but microenterprise, that services be new services or a documented increase in an existing service, except for microenterprise, since that is an important economic.
And the second question is, for adopting a five-year plan in the consolidated plan, do we reassess that on an annual basis, and how difficult is it to modify that or change it on an annual basis based upon reflection of the community?
I hope we don't amend it every five years, but after this first year, we may really learn a lot about where needs are. We would want to adjust those priority areas over the first year. You can amend it as necessary, but it's intended to be a five-year planning tool, and then your one-year action plan is done every single year to address your long-range goals. And I did notice in reviewing this document, because I didn't have time to thoroughly review it, that I need to add some information into the strategic plan that I discussed earlier that I somehow missed in that area. So there are a few updates, but I'm making sure that we're being broad enough and not too specific in some of our priority program areas, so that it may not need to be amended. But there'll be new data which may show a different story.
My concern is we, if we're looking five years out, the one thing we know for sure is we're looking five years out, and things will change. And we need to have the ability to modify that based upon the needs of the community, not locked into a plan per se.
It can be amended with a public hearing. I know Corvallis has amended their plan. I saw an amendment went through last year, so.
And we will be having the ongoing, you know, planning committee on this too, that'll always be looking at everything and evaluating it. So I would imagine if there's things that look like we do need to adjust, or it's just not quite fitting for how this plan is, well, there's plenty of opportunity to have that public hearing and revise it, so, yeah. Okay, Rich, and then?
I presume, maybe too much, but I presume that that body would then make recommendations back to us for changes, or if there were not going to be any changes, would give us a report as to what and how, and how it's been working, and et cetera, et cetera, so we could make that choice. Thank you.
Anne, you mentioned this excessive force policy. Is that something you've had to develop, or does our police department have something similar? You use that language?
We do have a resolution that adopted, it's just a one-sentence excessive force policy, and then following state and federal laws related to it. It's just in civil rights demonstrations, nonviolent civil rights demonstrations, so it's very isolated, and it's meant to protect both fair housing, it's a civil rights issue, and protected causes. But I talked to Wes about this, whether we should do a separate resolution, but it's already a policy that we have adopted, and we're just certifying that we will continue to follow that policy, but we could certainly amend our policy on that as long as we don't, that we're still in compliance with what HUD requires.
And I just, I guess my concern was that we are consistent with what the police department's doing, or they're aware of the policy, or?
Yeah, I mean, Anne and I discussed today, we don't really want to see excessive force used in any situation, but back in 2000, as a condition of one of our community development block grants, we were asked to pass a resolution certifying that we would not use specifically targeted, we would not use excessive force when dealing with folks who are exercising their rights in a civil rights demonstration. Obviously, that's not been a big issue here. I've never heard of any complaints, I don't know of any examples.
How do you define it?
Well, that's another whole, long discussion, but, so we have a very simple statement, which I think is appropriate, that just says we won't do it. Now, the police department has its own protocols about how they will respond to different levels of situations, and again, I think in general, they've done a good job, and we have not had to deal with it as a practical matter at all.
Okay, all right, Bessie.
As I was reading this, I was just wondering, and what Bill just said about the excessive force, the drug-free workplace policy kept coming up, you know, thinking, well, we probably already have something like that, but no. Is it just that you have to have the policy? And then, because I was thinking ahead, say something does happen, and there is drug in the workplace type thing, and maybe it's not handled exactly right, does HUD pull their money back? Or is it just that you have to have the policies in place?
That the policies are in place, that we would address an issue if it came up.
The policies are in place, and along with the expectation that you would adhere to those policies, exactly, and that if you violate them, yeah, there could be consequences to future recipient, or to your future receipt of funds, so.
Another thing, and I can't find it right now, but it was something about how we replace, say if we have to take over a property like we did with some manufactured homes, and then we have to relocate them, that's what it was, relocate. And I noticed that in there. Is there any different than what we actually do now in the new, what we have to do?
No, it's a federal policy. If you're using federal funds for a project that might displace residents, you have to find a, an equivalent residence of the same affordability. And this really dispels that out in a nice way. Actually, this is a template that HUD has on its website that we're supposed to use. So it's the same, we just, I just don't know that we have ever adopted one, but it would be a policy, for example, if innovative housing is getting federal funds, say, we need to follow that policy. We're just going to need to adopt it, that we will also, we have that as a plan. And so it's, it may not come up, I don't know that that will happen, because we don't have enough money for a lot of new construction, but we need to have it adopted, yeah.
Trying to reach for the microphone, sorry. Having, having worked with some communities that have had substantial CDBG funding, one of the concerns I have as we go about establishing how we're going to develop and implement a program is, at some point, sometimes the federal government pulls or reduces CDBG funding. And I've seen it where allocation of funds go to programs primarily for operating expenses. The money goes away, but the expectation is that the programs continue, and then we come back to Wes and say, find me some tax money. And that creates major community havoc. And I would want us to be very careful about allocating things that people not become dependent upon the CDBG money for continued operating expenses. I think they have to go for special-purpose functions. And if they're gone, they're gone. We then, as a community, can have a discussion if we want to have them compete on a priority basis with some of our basic services, but once you accept the CDBG money, there's no guarantee that you're going to continue that.
Absolutely.
It has been a pretty, well, all things are relative, it's been a pretty steady source of money for cities, and even us, but in a different form. In the past, we had to compete for this money, and we were pretty successful, primarily with housing rehabilitation loan programs that we've run for decades here in the city. And, you know, the, obviously, when you get the money in, you're able to do more. You use it up, you get some repayment from those loans, and then that helps replenish it. So you do see some rise and fall in terms of the level of that program in particular. But I think your caution is a good one, and, but I also think it's important to recognize at the front end, that the CDBG programs, whatever they, whatever area we're working in, are dependent on whatever Congress allocates for that program.
I just want to make a statement, that comment that, you know, reading through this report, it's pretty sad, you know? One thing that jumped out at me was the number of people waiting to get into assisted housing, or getting the vouchers and whatever, and the three-year wait. You know, I always wonder, what do people do when, I mean, they need something now, and they put in a waiting list for three years, you know? And so, and there are just so many other things in here that, you know, our unemployment rate is so high, and just, my glass is usually half-full, but in this report, it's like it's half-empty. Because somehow, we have got to do something to bring more businesses into town, bring more jobs. We have got to do something, and, you know, hopefully, AMDEC, or whoever, you know, I'll be asking later about this business task force or whatever, but I just thought it was a pretty sad report, because City of Albany and Lynn County aren't doing well.
Yeah, good news, we'll be able to, again, addressing some of those issues and leveraging other funds with this money, so. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Any other questions, Anne? And we still have the public hearing open, and the first person, the only one that signed up was Renee Smith. So Renee, would you like to come forward? And then you'll need to state your address here for the record.
Good evening, my name is Renee Smith, and I live at 150 Northwest Parker Place in Albany. Thank you for the opportunity to come tonight to speak in favor of the plan. I was thinking back, I am here not only as a citizen of Albany, but also as the director of the Family Tree Relief Nursery, and we're an organization that works with many of those families. Councilman Johnson, that you were just speaking of, we work with families with young children that have a large number of risk factors that makes their children susceptible for abuse and neglect. And our organization provides wraparound services to help stabilize the family and help them find resources in our communities that will help them grow stronger as a family, increase their parenting skills, so that their children can continue to live with them in a safe way, and not enter into the foster care system. And we do do that in a wide variety of ways. But one of the things that struck me, when I first came on at the nursery in 2005, I think Anne and I had one of our first conversations, and now, Anne, in 2014, we've gotten this far, so I just am really excited for what the future holds for Albany. Our agency works with anywhere from 250 to 275 families a year in a variety of programs. And one of the common factors that they have that makes their life really hard is they don't have stable housing. And so, if you're trying to raise a family without stable housing, it's even more challenging. So many families live in fifth-wheel trailers, they live in campers, some stay in tents in their family's backyards in the nice weather months. They live with, if one family member has some type of dwelling, many family members live there together. And that is a really stressful place for a two- or three-year-old to learn their language skills, to learn all the big things of toddlerhood, the eating, sleeping, and going to the bathroom. So it makes it really hard for young children to develop and meet their milestones when their families don't have stable housing. So, we're extremely supportive of the, part of the plan where it looks at being able to increase safe emergency housing for families. We desperately need a family shelter in our community. If you receive an eviction notice, there is no place in our county for a family to go and stay. We often help them go over to Corvallis, to the facilities there, but many of them don't want to leave all the support systems. don't want to leave all the support systems, including their children's education services and all, by going to Corvallis. So we see a huge need for a safe shelter for families, as well as those transitional housings with case management services, as well as affordable low-income housing that's a safe unit for families to live as well. I mean, we're actually in support of everything. We need more jobs so our families have income so that they can then afford, afford their housing as well, and especially, we're looking forward to the area of public service funds, and I totally hear Councilman Collins' concern. When agencies and nonprofits look at funding streams as reliable, then oftentimes, they can get into trouble, and so I think in our community, the other nonprofits that I work with, we kind of think it's the dance of dollars, you know, so sometimes you can access dollars in some pots that will help you leverage dollars in other areas. The relief nursery model is a great example. We get some state dollars, and then we have to raise a 25% cash match through different opportunities, local donors, as well as foundations and grants, and then we also can utilize those dollars, perhaps, to access some of these dollars, as well as other contracts that we have with Department of Human Services. So the good news of the nonprofits that I work with, or other agencies that meet all these needs, we're used to taking dollars that we get in one year and parlay that into services going forward, and also, sometimes, we do have to rearrange services when streams of dollars change or are no longer available, and so having a well-rounded resource plan for your agency organization is, would be important, and I'm sure that the commission that you put together to look at those proposals would look at that, but we're just very excited about the possibilities that these dollars will bring to our community. One thing that we're finding more and more is that there is a very large Spanish-speaking population that is coming into our communities, and has probably been there for a while, but not everyone sees them necessarily, and that there are very few programs that have services delivered in Spanish. Our program does. When I started, I would say probably a doubt, 10% to 15% of our families were Spanish-speaking, and now, I have to cap it at 50%, because I could certainly have, out of the, probably, I have my notes here, out of, in Albany, of the 42 families that were enrolled in our classroom program here in Albany, six, 19 of them were Spanish speakers. So we've gone from 10% to 15% to almost 50%, and I could fill my whole program with Spanish speakers, and we just try to make sure we have services for all the families in our community that needs them. So I know that that is a growing need in our community that sometimes goes unseen unless you're working with families with young children, so. That's all I have. Thank you so much, and we really look forward to the future and what these funds will do for our community.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much, Renee. Any questions, Anne?
I do.
Oh, you do?
With your services and everything, when you're talking about the Spanish-speaking programs, whatever, do you have anything that teaches Spanish, the Hispanics English?
You know, we don't have-
Would that be more economically done?
Well, with, with, the model of our service, what we provide is classroom experience for children where they, where it's delivered in English and Spanish, so they, we are working with the children and developing their English skills. We also have staff in the classroom that speak Spanish, so we make sure that we can adequate, we can be sure to understand what their needs are, and they can communicate, and then we also encourage them to use both, both of their languages, both their home language and then English as well. We deliver our parenting classes in Spanish. I always like to stay and listen, because it's a unique blend of English and, and Spanish. The way that our model is, we don't have staff that would be trained in teaching English as a second language, but I know as those resources have, are changing in our community, that might be something that we would look at, but in our core service programming, it's not something that we've offered in the past, but it's a good, good thought to look at and see how, if there are funds that we could access to do that.
Because I think that would be good for them and good for the community.
Sure. You know, all the families that we work with, regardless of their cultural backgrounds, love their children and want different lives for their children, and it's just fun to see the parents grow, and then how that supports the children and their growth as well. We want them to be ready to go to Albany Public Schools so they can grow up to be like the young man that we saw here earlier today, and be able to do good work in his high school and for his community.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Renee. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on this, the CDBG grant funding? Yes, Mr. Clausen.
Jim Clausen, 1403 15th Street. Years ago, many years ago, the federal government told all the states that they had to go 55 miles an hour, and this was during a gas crunch back then, and when they, when some of the states balked at that, they, they held out little federal dollars and said, "You're not going to get road money to, to do anything if you don't, if you don't adopt our plan." I looked at that, and I thought, "Wow, that's a lot of power for the federal government to have. They're just going to walk all over the states, and it's only going to get worse, that's going to grow, because they found out that they have power over the states." And I look at these programs, and all the little things that, I think Rich mentioned, some of the little things that are attached to these things, somebody did, somebody over on this site did, and, but they mentioned the little things that are attached to these that you have to do. I heard them worded as requirements, I heard that word requirement, I don't know how many times tonight, and they are requirements if you want that money, but that's the only reason they're requirements. There's no law saying you have to do these things. They're only requirements if you want that money, and that's exactly what they did with that 55 mile an hour thing years ago. To get that money, you had to, to get the money to do the street thing, you had to abide by their rules, and you had to go 55 miles an hour. I look at what's going on in this country now, and how much the federal government is intruding on everything and anything we do. They tell us what kind of light bulbs we have to use, they tell us how much water our toilets use, they do all sorts of stuff. You go down to the Bymart and buy a gas can, and there's federal regulations on a gas can, tons of regulations on those gas cans, everything we do, and it's because of stuff like this, because they dangle money out in front of people and say, "Hey, develop this, we want this this way, and you'll get lots of money if you do that." And it's the same thing with this. They're dangling money in front of you guys and saying, "We want you to do this," and meanwhile, we cede more and more power to the federal government and less and less power to ourselves, and we give them a ton of money to do that, too. We give them a ton of money to get rid of our power. That's scary stuff.
Jim, can, do you want to, is there comments you want to make towards the actual plan, or?
Yeah, the actual plan is, I don't want to do it.
Understand your sentiment.
I don't, I don't like, I don't like taking money from the government. I don't like taking money from the federal government and having them tell us how to run our lives, because that's what they're doing. That's the ultimate plan with this. They started, they, the 55 mile an hour thing was a test case years ago, let's see how far we can push these people and make them do what we want them to do to get, to get money, and look where it's taken us today. They're into everything. They're telling us how to live our daily lives now.
Okay. We understand.
And this kind of stuff is what does that.
Okay, we understand. Yep. Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on this block grant funding? Okay, not seeing anyone. Does staff want to respond to any issues raised?
I have one question.
Yep.
I have one question, Anne. Going back to the time they spent on the Valamite Criminal Justice Committee, one of the needs within both the region and Albany specific was a detox facility.
Yep.
And having, not having a detox facility results in, people who are picked up that are intoxicated, sometimes being taken to a facility and immediately turned out because there's no place for them. Is funding of a detox facility within the guidelines of CDBG?
As a public facility, yes, it is, because it's working with a special needs population, which would be the addicted people. I know that it's identified in Corvallis' plan, we've identified as a need here. I didn't put it as a specific program in the first year, but yes, it's a regional need, and I believe we could help in different ways, whether it's through site acquisition or through public infrastructure and assisting it.
Or, or buying into or paying for services provided by other jurisdictions?
Yeah, drug and alcohol rehabilitation is eligible.
Okay. Personally, I think a detox component within our community is important, because we've just got a revolving door in many cases, and they're drunk, people are drunk on the streets, we pick them up, we take them away, within a few hours, they're right back on the street, and they're creating additional problems that relate to housing and blight and a whole lot of things. So I think consideration for some form of detox assistance would be critical.
I'll make sure it's clear in the plan, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
All right. Any other questions, Anne? Okay, and so this will be a continuance of the public hearing until August 14th. Okay. All right. So with that, that takes care of everything that's under A, so we will be to B, and that's business from the public. And is there anyone here this evening that would like to bring an item forward, business from the public? Okay, yeah, Bill?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Bill Root, R O O T, I live 2634 Northwest Valley View. I did something last week that I don't normally do, and I suppose we can suggest that Rich Kellum had something to do with that. I actually downloaded the packet rather than just the agenda, which is my normal procedure, and I actually went and read through it. I didn't read all 200 pages of it, but I glanced through a lot of it, come to page 25, and there was a statement in there concerning, one of the things that they didn't cover, which was food. They did, they, they basically said on page 25 that there was some areas that they didn't cover, and that was food programs that are available here in Albany, because they didn't have time until four. And, and I think that's fine. I think that it is something that needs to be addressed, and I want to address that. I wear a lot of hats. This is one that I like to wear, because it introduces me as a U.S. Navy veteran, and I'm quite proud to have served my government that way many years ago, and, and I am an advocate for veterans. There are a number of veterans out there that do need our help, whether they're homeless, unemployed, injured, whatever. There are a number of them out there, and I see them a lot. The reason I brought the hat up was because I do, I wear a lot of hats. Besides being the chairman of the North Albany Neighborhood Association, I'm also a member of the Board of Direct, the Advisory Board for the Salvation Army, I'm a volunteer at the St. Mary's Soup Kitchen, and I'm also one of the members of the former AMO group that tried to keep the city toy run alive. So I wear a lot of hats. Today, I want to talk as, as a volunteer from the St. Mary's Soup Kitchen. What has happened? Two things. One is, I want to say right off the bat, we're seeing a lot of new people. We are seeing young men, single men, twenties to thirties, et cetera. We're seeing a lot of families. We're not seeing that overall, there's this huge surge in the number of meals we serve. Tonight, we served over 100 people, and that's pretty standard, you know, of course, the end of the month, we're 100, 125, 150 people. And, but there are a lot of new ones, a lot of new faces, so I think that's important to realize, that there are people coming into town that we haven't seen before. As a matter of fact, Monday night, it literally tore at me, there was a family came in, a man and his wife and four kids, and they were right at 6 o'clock, and we had run out of food. We literally gave them a piece of hamburger that big around and a slice of bread. That's all we had for them, and I spent probably 10 minutes talking to the guy and so forth, and found out that was, yeah, they, they didn't know about us, and found out about us, and they had just, just come into town. Another thing that happened recently, in the last couple of weeks, we had four people that were evicted from coming back to the soup kitchen to eat by the St. Mary's Church. These people had apparently been obnoxious, intoxicated, smoking, those kind of items on church property, and that's a problem. The church has its needs, and the soup kitchen has its needs. We have, for a long time, offered to allow people to come in a little early, and it got to the point where they're at 3 o'clock, they're in there. Well, we couldn't take it. Finally, they had to say, "Okay, the doors are kind of open at a quarter to 5:00." But has that stopped the people from showing up at 3 o'clock? No. So what is happening is the people, if you're standing on the sidewalk in front of the church, you're within the 10 feet of the building, which is what the church says, "No smoking within 10 feet of the building." So that has forced people to go across the street, down the block, and so forth. One of the things that we had many years ago, we have a gazebo across the street, a block away, and I drove by the other day, and I said, you know, it's still got this sign on it that says, "Closed for construction," and it still has a sign on it that says, "No trespassing. Trespassers will be arrested." And, and here's my suggestion. I realized that there was a problem with the gazebo. I realized that the people that were using it abused it, but I think that's why we tried again. I think that what we should do, open the gazebo up, allow that the people that are going to be using it are going to be the people that maybe you don't want to use it, but they're the ones that want to. Let them come in, let them use it. Put trash cans up there so that you don't have to litter. Put up a porta potty, so they have some place to use the restroom. Put up ashtrays. I realize smoking is not a, a good thing to do. I quit smoking 40 years ago, but it's something that still people do. Put up ashtrays so that they have a place to put their cigarette butts. Open it up. Make it so that it is not legal for them to camp overnight, make it so that it's not legal to have alcohol, drink alcohol, or do drugs. I mean, that's already illegal to do drugs anyway, but still, make it so that it's, because it is a park, and I know that the park does have the requirement that they can make it a non-alcohol park, and, and go ahead and open it up. This would give the people, this would cause, this would have two effects. One is, it would have a place for the people to go to congregate before they go to the soup kitchen, and the other one is, it'd keep them off the church property, and that's a plus for both of them.
So Bill, there's kind of a lot more to that issue that I'd really like to sit down and talk to you about, and kind of give you a little bit more information on that, but- But in a perfect world, it'd be wonderful if it worked that way, but it doesn't. They were, remember, they were hanging out all day long.
Oh, I, I.
They trashed the gazebo, and very drunk, disorderly, causing commotion, and people would not feel safe to even walk by it.
Yeah.
So there's many things that I'd love to sit down and talk to you about this issue, so.
I understand that, Mayor.
Yeah.
But there's things we can do. We can put a curfew, and anybody that's there beyond 8:00 or whatever is in violation of curfew. I mean, there are ways of going about it besides just shutting it down for everybody. And it's, it has been there for a couple of years, not open to anybody.
Right. It's, it also, the neighboring businesses really had some issues too, so we can sit and talk about it. I'd love to kind of update you on some other stuff coming up, but, yeah.
But anyway, just a suggestion.
Yeah, that'd be great. But no, I'd love to meet with you, maybe next week, we can have coffee or something.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Just a quick question. Bill, you may or may not already know, but I, when I weren't working down at the Albany Employment Department, I sit right next to a couple of the vet reps, and one of them has phenomenal resources for folks that are in the hunger issues and stuff. That's Cliff Springstead down there. He's one of, he travels around Sweet Home, Lebanon, Carvallos, and he's in Albany. I know he hands out food baskets semi-regularly to vets in need. So if they're a vet and are in dire straits, I would try and point them, not only to the county veterans representative, but to Cliff down at the employment department also.
Well, I'm not aware of it, but I know that there are a lot of other organizations. Salvation Army, for instance, they hand out a food basket once a month to needy families, but, and this is food that they would take home and cook. This is not just a meal. This is enough food to feed however many people, and they hand out the baskets compared to however many people. If you show up and you've got four kids, you're going to get a couple of big boxes of food. You're going to have enough food to feed your family for like two weeks. The Salvation Army does that every month. Fish does that. I know that.
To address your question about working with the vets.
I'm sorry?
I was just trying to address your comment about working with the vets.
Oh, well.
That's all that one, that's all my comment was about.
Yeah. And I don't know how to help. I don't know, I really do. I do not know how. I know that Lebanon putting in that vet hospital is a great thing for this area. That's a big improvement. What else can help? I don't know. It would be nice to have detox work. I have a cousin that died shortly after he came home from Vietnam, from an overdose. So it's a problem.
Bill, I appreciate you bringing up the gazebo because I actually, I go to St. Mary's, and so I walk by it every Sunday, and I was going to bring it up in the near future anyway, but right now, I too think it's an, for one thing, it's an eyesore, you know, and it needs to be fixed up anyway.
Well, it does, yeah.
You know, and I don't think that, I mean, I think what you suggested has some merit, and I think we need to look into it, you know, because if you can get it away from in front of the church, you know, give them someplace to go, that type of a thing, I don't think it'd be, you know, that bad, but, you know, there's a lot of circumstances, because I know there's a problem.
Well, that was my whole point. It didn't have to be at the gazebo.
Yeah.
But something where people can congregate so that they can go in when it's time to go eat, someplace for the people to get out of the weather. Right now, the weather's just sun. Later on, it'll be rain. So it would be nice. It's just something that, an idea that I came across.
All right.
Okay.
All right. We'll get together for coffee, Bill, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else from business from the public? Yeah, Mr. Owen?
Dick Owen, O W E N. I'm at 810 Cox Street. You all have a bill for May in front of you. I'd like to discuss this bill. Does everybody have a bill?
We do. Thank you.
Okay. Up there, the water was shut off in 2007, and the meter has read 105 since then, and the consumption in this particular bill is zero. Okay? Everybody agrees with that? All right, now, look down here at the consumption charges. The consumption charges are $17.05. That's not for two units of water. Is everybody in agreement on that? That's not a?
Sewer charge.
Two units of water?
Charge.
At $2.13, so why it comes out to eight units of water. All right. The city has caused me a tremendous amount of damage on this thing by turning this water bill, when they raised it up, over to the county assessor to collect the.
Heard that before.
To collect the deal, and I refuse to pay eight units of water. Now, we had an agreement.
But wait, Mr. Owen, I believe that our Public Works Director has met with you several times and has resolved the issue.
That's correct.
Right.
But it's not resolved.
Well, I thought it was resolved, so, and I think it was very generous.
Now, I'm bringing this part to the city council because he cannot resolve this particular item. The damage that it has caused is to the county assessor. He's going to foreclose my house in about a $250,000 house for a small sewer bill, and I'm not paying eight units. Now, you violated the agreement that we had of two units. We'd used past history. You came out and shut my water off on the 25th day of January in 2007, and I had paid it up on that date, and I haven't had any city water since then. So we had to come up with some kind of agreement of what we were going to do on the sewer. Now, the damage that it caused me is that you took it to this county assessor, and yet, when you violated the two units of water going into the sewer, which I was willing to pay for, why, you got zero up here on consumption on this meter, on the city meter. So I suggest that the city of Albany get this deal out of the assessor's office.
Well, and.
And I have lived in that house for 44 years, and I paid my bills. And I paid my water bill, and I paid my sewer bill. But when this thing came up, I stopped paying because it's really extortion when there's two units going into the sewer, and you're charging me for eight.
All right, so, Mr. Owen, I know I would rather have the council hear from our Public Works Director on the conversations that the two of you have had, and what came up for resolution.
Well. We're pretty much in agreement on that.
Okay.
But what I'm saying is, that since you, since the city of Albany has violated the two units of sewer, water going in the sewer, why, then you put a water meter, or you put a sewer meter on it and measure the sewer, and I'll pay whatever the sewer meter says.
So let's have our Public Works Director update the council on.
He just got through telling me that he cannot get it off of, off of the assessor's, between the city of Albany and the assessor.
Let's, let's let Mark explain this.
And also, it happens to be that the county commissioners are madder than hell on this thing, because it, there was a 3% discount on my tax bill by paying it early, and I paid it early. And I've lost that now because of this other assessment going on. Thank you very much.
That was your choice. Okay, Mark.
So in discussions with, with Mr. Owen and looking at his billing, he last paid a sewer, his sewer bill in February of 2010. Since then, the city has not received any sewer payments from Mr. Owen, and per our rate resolution, at the end of the year, if a sewer-only customer does not pay their bill, that bill is certified to the county. The county pays the city for that, for that bill, and then puts that amount as a lien on the assessment for, tax assessment for the property. As Mr. Owen said, we've come to an agreement that the city is willing to credit back his account, the difference between eight units of usage and two units of usage dating back all the way to March of 2010 to current, which is, would be a credit of almost $500. We've also agreed to credit back to him the penalties that were assessed because his bill had to be, or his charges had to be certified to the county. We've also agreed to credit back the interest charges that were assessed against his property. So in all, we're, the city's offering to credit him back $694.44 against his sewer costs, again, from March of 2010 to today. So the amount that, the balance he owes to Lynn County is $1,385.89. So if he pays that balance, and we give him the credit, he will, he will have a credit still to his count of $56.20 that he can apply to his future sewer billings that we've agreed to bill him on two units of water. His history did show in the last couple of years that two units is a good estimate of his actual uses, usage there. So we've agreed, unless he has some additional people living at house, his house, or anything else changes, that we will bill him the two units. And I think Mr. Owen's concern is not wanting to pay Lynn County for the balance that he owes that represents two units of usage plus base charge from March of 2010 to current. Does that explain, do you have any questions on that? I don't know if I explained that clearly.
Well, I think the council understands this, but for the audience and apparently for Mr. Owen, I think it's also important to understand that utility billings frequently have two components. One is essentially a standby charge. It's a cost that the municipality bears by having lines, facilities available to serve. For example, if Mr. Owen or someone else in his situation were to sell their home, their home would be more valuable to a third-party buyer because it has sewer available. That infrastructure is all there, and they are part of the system, and the standby cost is essentially an amount which is set to represent their partition, or their portion, I beg your pardon, of those costs. Your resolution set the standby minimum, if you will, at the eight units. You've given the director authority to modify that in individual circumstances, but there is nothing wrong with charging eight units. And that was, so it's not as if there was an error. There is a willingness on the part of the director to exercise discretion. You've given him to give Mr. Owen a break. I have suggested, in talking to Mark today, that I don't think there is a role for the city to be involved in paying money to the county in this circumstance, and what the city should do is write Mr. Owen a check for whatever amount has been determined to be the amount they're going to give him, and let Mr. Owen deal with the county. Now, I suspect that the rub is that Mr. Owen has lost some of his discount that he would have gotten because he didn't pay what was being assessed as the bill. The point I want to emphasize is that's not an error. That was the bill. That was the correct bill, under your ordinances and under the law, until such time as the bill is reduced, under the discretion you've given the Public Works Director. So to imply that the city has done something wrong to Mr. Owen, or that we have made a mistake, is not correct.
Mark? Questions, Bessie?
Mark, how did you come up with the $1,300? I'm showing right now that the, I guess, the sewer, whatever is not paid in, for our taxes, is $1,400, $1,490. The interest is $5,671. So I heard you say something about $1,300. Did you figure in a 3% discount on that, or?
No, this is just sewer consumption charges, the difference between two units and eight units, the penalties that the city assessed, and interest that the city assessed. If there's some additional charges that Lynn County assessed, we didn't factor those in.
Okay, yeah. What is, what is the city penalty? I've always wondered that.
The city penalty?
Mm-hmm.
I believe it's a 10% penalty at the time that we do the certification.
Okay.
Any questions? Yeah, Floyd?
For Mark, on the copy of the bill we have in front of us, the consumptive charge that's listed of 1705, that is reflective of the two units going to the sewer. It has nothing to do with water.
On the.
Drinking water.
Correct.
It has sewer discharge.
Right.
So Mr. Owen is correct. When it shows zero consumption, means no water came through the meter. It came from his well. And the flat charge is our standby charge, and the consumptive charge is the volume based upon those two units that came from his private well that went to the sewer. Is that accurate?
That is accurate. I don't have a copy of that bill in front of me, but I, but that is what we are proposing to charge him from March 2010 to current, and then moving forward.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, several months ago, when Mr. Owen was here, he basically made that proposal, said, you know, reduce it to two, fix it at two, I'd be glad to pay for two, because I'm using two units of water that's going to the sewer, even though it's coming from my own well. I think that's what Mark has done. Now, there's the mechanics of how, how it works to go across to Lynn County and that type of thing, which I'm not familiar with, but we've effectively done exactly what Mr. Owen asked us to do several months ago.
So we did the crediting, and it's his responsibility to go pay the past taxes, the past lien, right, assessments?
Right. Because that, that represents the cost of two units of consumption plus base charge from March 2010 to current.
Okay. So to me, it's like the issue's been resolved, and we thank you, Mark, for resolving it, and that we hope Mr. Owen would fulfill his, his commitment on that resolution too. So, and that would be to just pay the county taxes and get it resolved. Okay? Anything else on that? All right? Any questions? With that, anyone else from business from the public? Not seeing anyone. Okay. All right, we have a first reading, which would be on page 195.
I'm reaching for it too. An ordinance to levy assessments against property specifically benefited by sewer and water connections in the assessment of sewer, water, parks, and transportation systems development charges for a property described as tax lot 6700 of partial 10S 4W 25CA, and site address 1931 of Royal Ridge Drive Northwest, and declaring an emergency.
I'll make a motion, the ordinance is better second time and title only.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, second reading.
An ordinance to levy assessments against property specifically benefited by sewer and water connections in the assessment of sewer, water, parks, and transportation systems development charges for a property described as tax lot 6700 of partial 10S 4W 25CA, site address 1931 of Royal Ridge Drive Northwest, and declaring an emergency.
I'll make a motion for adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, thank you. Next, we have adoption of a resolution. This is on page 201, and this is Jorge from the permit plus application upgrade. So, does council have questions? On this, this was brought to us at our Monday night work session.
I move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
And that was the second?
Yes, second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. Well, sorry, you came up for nothing.
Wasn't better than Monday.
Yes, thank you, Jorge.
Thank you.
All right, so next, council's adoption of the consent calendar. It's item E, and I'll entertain a motion unless you'd like to have any items pulled off this evening for discussion.
I'll make a motion for adoption of the consent calendar.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, the consent calendar is approved, and next, we have. And next, we have approval of an agreement. And who's going to take the lead on this one?
Let me start. At prior meeting, staff advised you, Stuart, you can jump in when I make a mistake here, but we advised you that, as you know, the Timber Hill property was delinquent in LID improvement assessments. And we had initially explored some possibilities whereby we would get most of the property back in lieu of foreclosure. And Timber Hill was asking for a credit of quite a substantial sum of money against remaining LID assessments that they own on property to the south of Knox Butte Road. We, at council direction, we responded back, said that proposal was not acceptable, but the direction of the council counter-proposed that we would agree to forebear foreclosure on the assessments south, on the property south of Knox Butte Road for three years.
Three?
Yes. But we still get the money. Now, there's no way really that we won't get either the land or the money. If they were to sell the property, the assessments in the full amount will be due if the three years comes and if they develop the property or sell the property, which is what they're seeking to do. What's in it for them is additional time to market the property in a hopefully improving real estate market.
For all the property?
No, the property south of Knox Butte Road. If they're successful in doing that, we benefit by getting a development on the tax rolls and we get all of our assessment money that's due for that property to the south. So that was the counteroffer you directed me to make. I made it and it was accepted. The remaining essence of the agreement is that we are receiving the property to the north of Knox Butte Road for the amount of the liens. What that means in fact, not just essence, is that we will have gotten fee title to all of the remaining property for the cost of the improvements. When you consider that in any development of vacant property, you have a value assigned to the land and then you have a cost to develop, which is the cost of public infrastructure, and then you can sell a developable, buildable lot. In this case, we are getting all of this land for the cost of the infrastructure. So we hope that market trends will continue to improve and that we will have opportunities to sell this property or put it to city use in a way that is economically beneficial. I will also remind the council, which is something that most of you will remember, a few years ago, the city was considering purchasing a substantial portion of this property for parks purposes, and the price that was being offered was, was high. In this case, you're going to be, again, getting the property for the cost of the infrastructure. I don't think this was ever our intent. We all, this project went forward during times when real estate was going up and up and up. The school district paid millions for the Timber Hill site. What property was worth then and what it subsequently became worth were two different numbers.
Yep.
So this agreement authori, or this document authorized as a city manager to finalize the settlement per your direction.
Are they agreeable?
They'll be even providing title insurance guaranteeing our title.
So moved.
Better motion to approve? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
No second.
All right. And Bessie, you have a question?
Yeah. So Jim, we're purchasing, were the infrastructure costs and everything $3,650,000? I mean, I, there's so many different, it says the total purchase price for the property is...
I'm going to let Stuart fill in the dollar amounts here for you.
Okay, thank you. The, the amount of the liens, the principal amount of the liens was the cost of improvements. The liens included annual interest at six and a half percent. So the current value, the $3,600,000, is $300,000 more than the original lien and the difference is the interest then.
Because, I mean, the property is only assessed at like $2,300,000. And so...
Profit?
Uh, well, yeah, but...
Well, part of the other, the other part of the equation, though, is there wasn't any other money to be gotten. In a local improvement district lien such as this, you can't get a deficiency judgment. All you can get is the property. So we could have sued to foreclose on the property and spent money doing that or worked this out. All we gave up in order to avoid that extra expense of foreclosure was agreeing that we would give them three additional years before we would foreclose on the property to the south. We didn't cut any of the liens. We didn't reduce or abate any of the interest. So the interest is still running on the property south of Knox Butte that they hope yet to save and develop.
So what is that, on the, on the south of Knox Butte, what is the lien on that and the...
It's mentioned in the agreement, the amount owing on the south parcel is $216,000. It's a smaller lien.
Yeah, because the property is smaller and stuff.
Yeah.
I guess my question is, is, okay, so we're going to do this, because this, we bought this with some of the settlement money. I mean, we, we funded it. And so how soon do we plan to market the property and, you know, because, I mean, I know we're not getting any money now. But it's just not quite working out the way, you know, I mean, I, I'm just saying somehow we're going to come out behind.
Well-
Be hard to do.
We're going to come out behind if we were to for sale it today, certainly. If history is any guide, property values will go up. They are currently improving.
Yes.
And at some point, the market is going to match the cost. I don't know when that is.
And my point is, is how soon we can market this and sell it to get the money to put back into the settlement funds because there was this, you know, this big plan to get all this money and refund and then we can, you know, we could fund the place, the fire and all this stuff. And now, you know, we've got the property, but the city's so known for, we get this property and then we hold on to it. And so I just, you know, and I'll, yeah.
I think that that's a good discussion for the council to have with staff periodically to check in and see, you know, what market trends indicate.
Well, we already have interest in the property. We've been approached by people who are interested in doing development there. Now whether they're willing to pay a price that the council's willing to accept, that's an unknown question.
Okay. Boyd?
That was really going to be my comment. I think there's two separate issues. One is acquiring the property, then developing a strategy on how to liquidate the property. And I'm going to support the motion to acquire because we've effectively, we're capturing the property for the cost. We're not being paid for it now. Puts us in the driver's seat. Then I think we have a discussion with staff about what that strategy is, both its concept and timing, on how do we liquidate. This is not foreign to the city. Several decades ago, we had over 800 properties that we owned and ultimately sold. I think this will be better. I had a conversation just two weeks ago with a local developer, said, it's tough to get land. Well, I'll tell you, it's, there's land out there now if we own this and the improvements are in. That saves them a year and a half to two years in developing and marketing their, whatever they want to put there. So...
This kind of brings up a question. So why did the family have such, I mean, if, if there's all this interest, you know, why did they, because they, they had it for sale. Was it price? Was it, you know, some, I mean, this is some questions that I've just, I've just got. And I just want to make sure that we, we get some money back into those settlement funds as soon as possible rather than just, you know...
Right now, we'll just have the property and it'll be sitting there, we're not getting
any money. And also, what kind of precedent will this set? Like, okay, well, this is what we're going to do. And so, yeah, the other people can say, well, I, I don't want to pay you, you know.
Well, it is a good lesson for the city and all cities that when growth hits again, we have to make sure that we feel comfortable that the property, the underlying property that is being approved by local improvement district assessments has sufficient value to justify the assessments. By way of history, we went through a great deal of hand wringing when we made the improvements that were necessary at 53rd to service and allow the development of Wes's neighborhood. We were concerned then that there were millions of dollars being involved and put into building a bridge because that whole area intermittently was cut off during times of high water and it wouldn't support those developments. And we structured the agreement as carefully as we could and it paid off. The developments occurred, the debts were paid, and we now have a nice area of town that doesn't have those safety hazards. So I think our history has been pretty good over the 35 years that I've been involved with it, but no record is perfect. And very few of us saw the, the rapid decline in real estate values that occurred several years ago.
Yeah. And I think it's still an open question as to community gain/loss on this, too, in terms of, you know, the, the school was built, the infrastructure was put into place that was necessary not only to serve these pieces of property, but other parts, that other part of the city as well. The city has an asset that's pretty tangible and that can be used in a variety of ways, part of which could be used to recover some of the funds, which you expressed and I agree, but also perhaps some other public amenities out in that area, in an area that has been identified as having some needs, some open space needs. So, I mean, it's still, there's still a good shot at a win-win on this, as far as I'm concerned.
Would this be considered a shovel-ready site?
Well, not, it's not an industrial site.
Not huge.
We only apply, we typically only apply the shovel-ready designation to an industrial site. And this is more residential than...
It's all residential.
Yeah. I think there is a, I think there is a, there's a commercial-
It's a mixed use.
-mixed-use piece there, but basically it's residential, yeah. Certainly not industrial.
I mean, I'm not going to vote against it, but I just, I just want to bring up some points and stuff because I just, you know, I hate to see the settlement money just go because, you know, it's been, we've been really half-decked.
There's about 10 million of it, depending on how you want to look at it, that's still available and not, it's in an account. It's there.
And then when this gets paid back or however it's, you know, reimbursed, I still settle. Yeah. Okay. Any more questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Next is the code enforcement team report. Marilyn.
I've been sitting here thinking about Councilor Reed this evening because if he were here, he would notice two glaring errors in my report. First is, and this is not my mistake, this was a, this was a collective thing. I was out of town when this ended up in the packet. It was intended for the August 14th meeting, which is why the date appears as August 14th. But in a fit of enthusiasm, we got it in this packet instead. And I'm glad I noticed it was on the agenda, so I would be prepared to talk about it. Councilor Johnson also noticed that a legacy error has crept into it on the bottom of page 228. Property number seven, 595 Gary Street is northeast. I thought we corrected it. We hadn't, I hadn't corrected it, so I'm going to take full credit for that one. But the report really speaks for itself. It's the end of another year. We are, we have successes, we have frustrations, we keep at it. And I wish there was some answer for all the people who choose to leave their discarded furniture at the curb. I didn't mention that one in here, I don't believe, but that's my latest pet peeve.
Requiring chips being planted in all furniture so that we can trace them back to their owners, might be.
That would be so nice. Would be so nice.
Yeah. So, any questions, Marilyn?
Any, any questions or comments or...
Will the vagrant furniture eventually disappear when somebody takes it and wants it?
Some of it disappears on its own. Some of it I make disappear. I have people. Anyway.
I have a neighbor who put out a free cabinet and I'm thinking, oh my God.
We have a corner, actually, at the very end of my cul-de-sac is a popular spot because there's a lot of traffic there. And I got up one day, was going to work about a month ago, and there were four, count them, four television sets lined up facing my street.
Councils?
Wow.
Council, big council.
The, the big old, old fat two TVs.
Breaking some arm chairs and you could watch community viewing.
The lawn chairs were there the week before. Anyway, there were three when I came home for lunch and two left the next day and then they disappeared.
Oh my God.
Yeah. So, I could take this opportunity to tell those watching at home that there is free electronics recycling at Republic Services. Drop it off, no questions asked.
Yes.
And if you don't want that nasty old couch, nobody else does either, but...
Put a price on it.
I know, I know, it's, it's probably going to end, well, never mind.
Good job, I say.
Thank you, Marilyn. It's a good program that we have at the city, so it's a part of our...
Mayor, I'm actually serious there.
Uh-huh.
People who want to give away an item and they have it out there in front, free, uh-uh. Thirty bucks, the next day someone has stolen it.
Really?
I mean, I'm serious.
It had value.
Yeah, they, well, it's the old adage, if, if you don't charge enough for something, people don't think it's worth anything.
Yeah, that's funny, yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Marilyn. I'll start putting signs on things that say $30. Maybe they'll go away. Business from the council. And actually, Anne ended up leaving, but I would imagine she wants us to keep all of our, the CDBG plans so they don't have to reprint this for the next council meeting. Maybe just mention about, bring back the original plans so they don't have to have 200 pages, re-poppy. Okay, Rich, do you have anything this evening?
I have a brief thing. I attended the county fair and I was re-impressed with Lynn County youth. It sees so much of kids who don't give a darn, who look scraggly, who act awful, who, all the things that bad things happen with. And I saw FFA, 4H, walking through the barns. You walk by, hi, how are you? They step in front of you, oh, excuse me. And I just wanted to point out that I feel lucky being here.
Yes. We do. We have wonderful, wonderful youth in our community, wonderful families and, yep, so great experience, great program they have out there at the county. Yeah, okay.
I'd like to bring up a continuation from our work session on the upcoming ballot measure. And I hope that our council gets behind our unanimous approval to put the measure on the ballot for the charter change and will actively support trying to get it passed. I think the ramifications of not having it pass does not speak well to a potential GO bond as outlined by Wes, which I think is absolutely a good thing to do. But I think we have to show good faith to the ballot measure that's coming up in September. So that's all I'll say at this point.
Okay. All right, thank you. Floyd?
Nothing, thank you.
Nothing? Okay, Bessie?
Yeah, I was going to say, I went back and checked and that was not unanimous. I did vote no on putting that on the September ballot because I wanted to put it on November, so it was not unanimous. I just wanted to just kind of make that clear. It was brought up Monday, too, so. I just went back and checked. That's all I have.
Okay, Bill?
I have something for Wes. And in the past, I know our building department permit sales have dropped and I don't think that's a unique situation to Albany. But my suggestion would be to, once again, maybe talk with the folks and encourage them to do everything they can to collect as much money as possible and work with the contractors and make it easy to buy permits. I have had three experiences just in the last two weeks with a couple of cities and a county north of us, and I am shocked at how difficult they are making it to buy permits. And I, you would think they would be begging for revenue. And I have no history of Albany not being good to work with. And every time we work with them, they're very easy to work with. So keep, keep up the good work. But I just, I can't believe the trouble I've had with some, some agencies.
Well, a couple of, if I may respond, a couple of things that I think will help. One is the, you know, getting, making sure that we're, we have the software, the tools that we need to do it. Secondly, we actually, this last year saw a pretty significant increase in permit revenue. Over, I think it was more than $200,000 higher than what we had received the previous year. So we are seeing an increase in permitting, permit activity, and that looks like it's continuing. We had a $36,000 permit day, day before yesterday or yesterday, I've forgotten which. But the, the point is, is that it seems to be picking up pretty dramatically and... the, the point is, is that it seems to be picking up pretty dramatically and buildings doing a robust job.
I'm going to guess maybe thirty years ago, there was a discussion because the state wanted to cha, uh, increase the electrical permits, and the chief electrical, uh, inspector for the state said, "I'm not really interested in increasing the permit fee. I would just be happy if everybody bought a permit that's supposed to buy a permit, and the way we can do that is by making it easy for them." And that's, that's part of the success as well.
Okay, all right. Is that it, Bill? Yeah, Dick?
Yeah, um, some before last, I, uh, my usual routine is to get the Democrat Herald off the front porch and take it in and sort through it and find the most important part, which is the comic page. And in sorting through, I usually pick out the Parade magazine too. And on the first pass through, all the ads and all the stuff, I didn't find the Parade magazine, and I thought, oh, what the hell, there's never anything in there anyway. But I took a second look, and sure enough, it was there. And in reading it, I found on the, I think, last, or next to last page, an article about a carousel, and I thought, well, now that's interesting. And, uh, below is a, a picture of Wendy with some of the carousel stuff. And I thought, well, now that's really neat, and I'm wondering who was responsible for getting this into the Parade magazine.
Carousel? Carousel folks, yeah.
Carousel folks did.
Yeah, they got it in there, and, um, I knew about it a couple of months before, you know, before it came out, and, um, and then it's kind of been plastered over Facebook and really, you know, putting it out there, letting people know about it, so...
Being a non-Facebooker, I guess it's not news to any of you. Yeah, I'm sure the rest of you saw it on Facebook, but I, um...
I just wish they could have done a longer article, too, because there's so much more to, you know, to mention about it, so...
Yeah. No, I don't know if there's some way that we can get more of our attractions in. I assume that this particular article went nationwide, or is it a reg, just a regional article, you know?
I don't know.
It's definitely, it goes broadly. I got reports from people in different cities that saw it, so...
Yeah, mhm. Yeah, that was great.
Well, kudos to the carousel people for getting that in there.
Yeah, yeah, isn't that great? Yeah. And, and I do know, um, the carousel folks did, um, ask me about wanting to have the council and the care board come up for a tour of the mechanism that was, um, put together. So, trying to find a time, um, I think it might end up being where we need to maybe, uh, because of vacations and stuff in August, is maybe try to find a time in September. So, I think the next care board will ask everybody there what would be a good, good time. It's either going to end up being probably a Wednesday night or at late afternoon.
Well, maybe we could have a study session out there. I don't think it'd be any more distracting than a boys' group.
Yeah, really.
That's true.
Yeah.
Well, they aren't carving too much at the time.
Yeah. You know, I did get some reports from people who were in the audience, Dick, who said they really enjoyed, they thought it was more fun watching the practice soccer game than the council work session. So, there was a side benefit, as you didn't see.
That was football, Wes.
Football, yeah, whatever it was.
Yeah, it was something. It was, it was hard to hear. Yeah. Okay, is that it, Dick? Yep, okay. And, um, I just have the Oregon mayor's conference is the next three days, and tomorrow I'll be giving a tour out at Talking Water Gardens for thirty-five, um, Oregon mayors that will be coming. Um, in the afternoon, we're also going to be touring the OSU Wave Research Facility beforehand, and, um, so, yeah. Um, so, no, it's going to be a, a good turnout for the, the conference. It's going to be over at OSU is, where the conference is this year. Okay, that's it. Wes, anything?
If anything additional, we have the...
Steph, have any questions?
One item. It looks like this sign-up sheet didn't make it all the way around the table. This, you are, all are on the city payroll, marginally, I know, but you still are, so you're included at the city employees picnic on Thursday, August fifteenth, at Timberland Park, from five thirty to eight PM. This is a sign-up sheet, so you can bring something to share. You only need to feed eight people with your, your contribution, but let us know what you want to bring. And I believe Counselor Kellum has already signed up, because he's going to provide fresh corn on the cob this year for the masses.
And all kinds of games and stuff.
Actually, no, it's only thirty gallons. Yeah, I'll need to know how many folks are going to be there.
We, well, we should have some kind of a head count by...
I mean, within fifty.
Before you get to the store.
Is that homegrown corn on the cob?
Uh, actually, it would come from grandpas. Uh, that's where the stuff for tomorrow is coming from.
Crab tree, cottonwoods.
Yeah. Um, yeah, it's their first, I was, they told me, no, they weren't going to have any, and I happened to be out there close and stepped in, and, oh geez, already, so...
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I don't think people can, can eat it faster than I can cook it.
Okay, that's wonderful. Okay, and, um, so, nothing else on that? With that, we are going to recess to executive session to discuss real property negotiations in accordance with ORS 192.6602E, and thank you, folks, for attending.